We all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic.
To the republic.
Forward.
For which is standing.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
And justice for all.
With liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We better practice that.
We butchered that, didn't we?
We sure did.
We didn't get in sync very good, especially on election day. Let me see. Let me get into my... I'll get... Okay, any deletion or addition or deletion of agenda items, Kristen?
Yes, this is Kristen. Mike Wesco has requested to be on the agenda this evening.
Okay, and, all right. Anything else?
Um, there was...
Okay, so...
Kristen, again, I had added an executive session to discuss labor relations agreements specifically as it pertains to the web coordinator role. I wasn't sure if you still wanted that this evening.
Yeah, we need to talk about that, but I don't... Yeah, I'm not even sure we need to... Yes, we should, because we got... we have numbers and offers to be made that we don't want to make public. You agree with that, John?
Yes. John says yes.
Okay.
Okay, this is Kristen. I can leave it. I just wanted to make sure that you still were interested in having it on tonight's agenda.
Yes, I think that would be good. Okay, so if we can, uh... Introduction, I'll, uh... We'll go through the select board members first, and then we'll go to the audience, please, or, and you, Kristen, and then we'll go to the audience. So I'm Mike Beecher, Chair.
John Malcolm, Vice Chair.
Charles Sweden.
Ed Cleveland.
And Bob Jones.
This is Kristen Powers.
John Sipatka.
Jessica Van Orte, I'm Planning Commission.
Tom Collard. Okay, on the bottom on the screen, I see a Mike Wesco.
Yes, Mike Wesco's here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you fine.
Thank you.
John Noor.
John Noor, you're a silent minority.
Okay. It looks like Shorty Stone on the Galaxy tab. Is that you, Shorty? I'm thinking so. Everybody agree with that?
Yeah, that's Shorty. That does volume on.
Redstone. Approval of the minutes. Did anybody see anything that they wanted changed or with the minutes?
I had a little, uh, technical correction, Mike, on number five. Speaking of Sally Akey running for the Rutland District, it should be the Rutland-Bennington District. I worked hard for that.
Sorry, John.
No, we did reapportionment, and it had a different name. Took a lot of work to get a hyphen.
I will change that.
Perfect. Anything else in the minutes that were cracks in or virtually fine? Somebody want to make a motion?
John will.
Okay, second?
I'll second that. Ed, Ed will second.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Chuck?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, approved. Pre-requested. Okay, we will go to Mike Wesco.
Yes, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you fine.
Well, first off, I'd like to thank the Board for this opportunity to speak this evening. And at past select board meetings, the subject of the condition of the town dirt roads has been somewhat contentious between residents and the Highway Department. And there have also been selectmen as well who have questioned the overall quality of the roads with deep-rutted mud, greasy, slippery, wet surface conditions, and dust have all been issues. So with that, I'd like to bring to the attention of the Board an event that took place last Tuesday and Wednesday, which would be the 27th, 28th. Two rainy days, specifically on Kelly Hill Road in the area of Rob Lee Farm Incorporated sand and gravel operations. An off-road heavy hauling dump truck was being used to move materials from the east side pit areas to the west side of Kelly Hill Road, where crushing and screening operations take place. This truck, I believe, was a Terex A300, which according to the manufacturer specs, grosses over 120,000 pounds. Should be noted that Kelly Hill is posted at 24,000 max, which makes this unlicensed excess weight off-highway truck roughly 100,000 pounds over the posted limit. The section of Kelly Hill Road that this truck traveled on last week is the same section of road which completely fell apart last January, February, and March. At that time, it was not car-passable and was difficult even with four-wheel drive. I assume that Keith Mason, the road foreman, ordered and directed the repair this past winter. Is there a conflict of interest here, given that Rob Lee Farm, Inc. is owned by the Mason family? And Keith Mason, I believe, is a principal and a shareholder of that corporation? You know, given the difficulties that already exist in terms of maintaining town roads and the budgets that support the Highway Department, why are taxpayer dollars being used to fix public roads that are then being used by an excess-weight vehicle for corporate profits? It should be noted that in RLF's Rob Lee Farm Incorporated's Act 250, multiple applications directly states that the operation will not cause any burden on the municipality of Palat. Therefore, I'm making a public records request. I would like the records of the Highway Department, their daily or weekly time cards, overtime paid, maintenance logs, maintenance expenses, fuel and oils purchased and used, and materials purchased, stored, and used for January through June of 2020 at this time. I would like to have those records at least three days prior to the next regular meeting if possible. I thank you for your time on this matter.
All right, um, we will look into that and see if we can come up with it. Um, I'm not 100% sure we can have them for the next meeting, but we will work on it and do our best to get some answers for you.
Okay, it's basically, it's two weeks, isn't it? Every two weeks?
Yes.
Yep, okay, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, so January 2020 to June 2020, Kristen?
Are you asking me to confirm the request?
Yeah, yeah.
Mike, wait, Mike, may you please confirm your request for public records?
It would be January through June of 2020 at this time.
No, Kristen, you have this on, on a recording, so we can play this back, so we can get exactly all the information off the recording and...
And what might be helpful, Mike, is if you could put that public records request in writing.
Yes, we can do that.
You'd be welcome to submit it to palatselectboard@gmail.com.
Okay.
And that's monitored by myself, and I can be sure to forward it along to the rest of the Board members, as well as the other town employees who might be of service and collecting that information for you.
Okay, uh, one other question I had. I believe that the town keeps a registry or a list of commercial vehicles that travel through the town as required by town regulations. Is that... I believe that's true. I've never seen it. I believe most towns in Vermont keep a registered log of all commercial vehicles, not necessarily overweight vehicles, but any truck that supposedly travels through the town is supposed to be listed. I'd like that list for at least the last two years if possible.
Okay, if you could add that. This is Kristen, again. If you wouldn't mind adding that to that email, that would be very helpful.
Okay, I could do that.
Thank you.
And now announcements.
There, this is Kristen. I have no announcements to report.
Okay. Reports. Is there a report from the zoning administrator, Kristen?
This is Kristen. One has not been submitted to me at this time. There were some email correspondence, of which I forwarded along to you guys, just some updates from Jonas about probably last week for some permitting things, but no formal report was submitted for this meeting.
Okay. Road Foreman's report, could you please read that? I didn't see the Keith had joined the meeting.
We have the Planning Commission up next.
Oh, I'm sorry, yep. I was trying to read it over, and I jumped right on it. Jessica, would you please give us your planning commission report? Thank you.
This is Jessica. Um, I did have a question. Should this commission report usually be submitted in writing as well? Or should it be a verbal report?
This is Kristen. They were always submitted both ways. Um, it was provided an email before the meeting, so I could forward it to the Board members for their review, and then also delivered verbally, but not sure if the Board wants to adjust that moving forward.
Um, this is Jessica. It's fine with me to write up a written report. I just didn't know that that was also a requirement. So I will do that beginning next month.
Well, if you don't mind, it's easier for me to read it a little bit in advance of the meeting and and then think about it if I have any questions or comments or anything for you, so that would be great. I think it's nice to be able to share it with the other select board members a little bit prior to the meeting.
Sure, this is Jessica. I'll do that going forward. Here's my, here's my report from the meeting that we had last week. Um, the Planning Commission has been looking back over the recent work that it's done about since January. And at this time, we agree that the general descriptions of each zoning district need to be somewhat more detailed and clearly aligned with the town plan to give the DRB clearer guidance. We still want to update some conditions for conditional uses that don't have conditions, but we realize that we may need to look at the big picture first, rather than plowing ahead with writing a bunch more, um, conditions at this time. Uh, Jonas suggested that we should apply for a grant that would be due next September for assistance in the technical aspects of working on zoning and the zoning bylaws. And we all agreed that it would be good to get, um, professional technical assistance. Um, by that time, next September, we plan to have a clear statement of what needs to be updated, and we want to incorporate public feedback into that. On a technical note, I've put Palat Planning Commission digital files into a Dropbox folder, so that all the commissioners can see them and have access to them. I was finding going back through emails to open attachments to be difficult. We had some discussion at our meeting of what's required about digital files by both open meeting law and public records law, and we decided that to be fully transparent, we would like to share a link to the Dropbox folder in the meeting warning. And I can include that in my next agenda that I sent to Deb. We are open to other methods of organizing digital files, if perhaps the town has a method that it prefers, but we would like to have some way to easily organize those. I did have one additional question for the, for the select board. I was emailed by Julie Mack asking about a budget, and that was the first that I had heard of that. Did the Planning Commission use a budget in the past? I'm not aware of anything that we would use it for. That's my, um, report.
The only thing I could think that you had a budget for was for a clerk that you don't have at this point, but you do need. Um, can you think of anything else, Kristen?
This is Kristen. Nothing?
This is Frank.
Just, go ahead, Frank.
Yeah, some of the commissioners on occasion would go to state spots, state-held meetings, uh, educational about topics having to do with planning for their own advancement, and it would bring any information back to the Planning Commission. So there would have to be a small token amount in a budget for, probably for travel and any fees associated with said meetings. That's the only thing I can think of additional to the clerk.
Okay, Julie would have a record, Jessica, of what was in the budget last year, or the town report book, or anything would show any, any numbers for the Planning Commission budget and how much was used. So that would probably be the best, if you could ask Julie, any history. John?
Mike, this is John. I have, uh, that lecture that Julie sent out about our budget, and it has a, uh, a Planning Commission clerk number, and only $82.50 have been used. The budget was 1,500 for that. I don't see any other budget.
This is Jessica. Thank you, John. I will, I will touch base with Julie about the, about last year's budget, and probably just do going forward whatever was done in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the Planning Commission? Well, thank you for sharing that with us in tonight, Jessica. Kristen, is it now Keith's turn?
Yes, this is Kristen, and there was a roads report submitted by Keith, which was emailed along to the Board for your review before tonight's meeting. Here's the report. Number one, ditch cleaning and grading are ongoing as weather permits. Number two, two trucks are serviced and set up for winter maintenance, and we will be preparing the others soon. Three, currently rebuilding the small sander and the cross-conveyor on the 13 Mack. Four, we are going back to five-day weeks for winter maintenance. Enjoy the upcoming nice weather. Thanks, Keith.
Okay. Anybody have any comments regarding the road foreman's report? Okay, assessors' report. Did you have anything from the assessor's office? Nothing this week. Okay. And town clerk's memo? Nothing this week. Okay. Town treasurer's has a memo?
Yes.
Could you please read that?
Yes, this is Kristen, reporting the treasurer's memo for November 3rd, 2020. There are two warrants to be signed. Payroll for the week was 13, 591, 60. The total accounts payable was 42, 728. Money is from the general fund, 14, 972, 92. Highway, 25, 289, 92. Wastewater, 2,004, 65, 16. I would like to please begin working on the budget. I have sent to you all the budget prep sheets to work from ahead of a meeting. Can we set up a time for a budget meeting? See below tables for a review, a review of tax collections. These are from September 10th after the first collection. 2021, 2020 to 2021 levy, Adjustments, homestead current use credits, 2,009, 34, 02. Adjustments, homestead current use increases, 18,361. State payments, 412,179.94. Taxes collected by treasurer, 2,024,170.47. Remaining tax levy, 1,052,632.59. Wastewater, 2020 to 2021 levy, 99,250. Adjustments credits, $746.2. Adjustment increases, none. Collected by treasurer, 30,216,09. Remaining levy, 68,287,89. Today is Election Day. I will be working the polls and may not be out in time for the meeting. If not, have a great meeting. Respectfully submitted, Julie Mack.
Okay.
That was a lot of numbers.
You did excellent. Thank you.
So the only thing I think that should be discussed this evening from that, perhaps among other things, is of course the warrants, and also thinking about a time to set up a budget meeting.
Okay. Let's get the easy one out of the way. Let's look at the warrants. Everybody look the warrants over? Anybody have any questions on the warrants? Anybody want to make a motion on the warrants?
John will make the motion to accept the two warrants.
Okay. Have a second?
I'll second. This is Ed. I'll second that.
Ed will second that motion. Any more discussion? All in favor? Chuck?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, motion's passed. Next question. When do we want to have a, a meeting for budget purposes only? She doesn't have all the information back from probably. She sent information out, but she didn't say anything about having all the information back from all the all the committees and etc., did she? Kristen?
No, this is Kristen. No, I can, um, I can email Julie, and her and I can email back and forth to figure out when she might be ready for that, and then I can let you all know, and then you can reply to me individually to see if it's okay, and then I can schedule it and put out a warning for a special meeting to discuss budgets.
Okay. In the past, we've kind of picked the off-Tuesday of a normal meeting. Is that satisfactory with the rest of you gentlemen?
Yes.
Good with me, John?
Okay.
Good with me, yeah.
Ed, you're good. Chuck? Sure. Okay, that sounds... See, see if you can work with Julie and then just pick one of the off-Tuesdays, whatever she feels she'll have, she'll be prepared for.
Yeah, if, this is Kristen, and if it's something that we could do as soon as next week, um, I think we could tentatively say that, and then if not, the meeting following or the Tuesday following the meeting after this one, so either next week or in three weeks.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you. And now turn my phone back on.
It's, um, this is Kristen. It's Emergency Management Director and Health Officer, of which there have been no formal reports submitted for this meeting.
Okay.
Amber has a way of really sneaking up on us.
Yeah. Bestie being only the third. Nobody knows quite on it, huh?
A lot, a lot of other things to be thinking about today.
Wastewater is next, huh?
Yes.
Okay, so RFQs, it, from what I read, correct me if I'm on top of it, if we're intact. We had three RFQs back, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so did, I didn't pay attention. Did Tom Brown copy you on his answer to my question this week? Okay.
Yes, I thought I was gonna sneeze, but so I can, if you'd like, Mike, I can give a little overview of what that email...
That would be perfect.
Okay, so this email just came through yesterday from, um, Tom Brown at Vermont, the state of Vermont. Um, so what we have to do, what the select board must do, is to rank the respondents in an objective fashion and then negotiate with the highest ranked. Um, that's word for word of what was instructed from Tom Brown. We have to put together FAQs and a guidance document, of which he's given links for examples. I just have not had a chance yet to sift through those. Once the process has been completed and we have selected our engineer, the following three items must be submitted for the files for the, at the state level. One is a copy of the advertisement that was posted, direct or solicited, which we have, the details of the posting, um, where it was posted, how long, and any direct solicitation. That will be relatively easy for us, as we were given a whole list of direct um, solicitation folks from, from Vermont Utility Management Services. And then the last thing is the completed RFQ certification form. Um, and then after that is for our engineer to develop a draft engineering services agreement, which is called an ESA, and submit it to our program for review and approval. Once approved, you will be prompted to execute the agreement and submit a completed funding application along with the executed agreement. He has spoken with me about the process a bit, too. So that's the email from Tom, and that involves what is needed to be done next.
And basically, we need to pull this off so we can have a bond vote in March. Right?
Which I think is very doable. The heart, this is Kristen, again, I think the most difficult part is going to be just getting through, you know, sifting through who the Board likes best, and then discussing with the preferred bidder. And then from there, it seems like all of the documents that are required to submit are pretty straightforward. Um, it's just, you know, it's just time to organize it, but I, you know, that's, that's nothing.
Okay, super. So I guess probably by the next meeting, we need to, we need to discuss this a little bit more and, and keep the ball rolling, I would say. Um, I, I started looking over just the other two choices beside Hoyle Tanner, but I, I didn't get very much farther on them, so. I hope to have, I will need to have more information for the next meeting for us all to share. If I get anything in the meantime, I will, I will email it to us all to to, uh...
So for the, this is Kristen. For the next meeting for agenda purposes, should the Board plan to have their preferred or their list of ranked engineers together so that or do you, or is your goal to have that before then and to have negotiations? Or do you, or is your goal to have that before then and to have negotiations kind of started before then?
I think, I think I'd like to at least have the list of engineers picked, so that we pick our choice at the next meeting.
Okay. Does anybody on the select board need those copies of the RFQs again? Or the SOQs? You all should have them, so...
Thank you.
Okay.
Perfect. And other than that, I have heard nothing in regard of any issues, so I'm assuming that everything is running fine. Tests seem to be coming back okay. They've been working on doing the deep cleaning of the sludge. Rutland's jumped the price up a little bit on the sludge, so... If we have our own sludge pit, we should be, that should help with the cost, because it'll break it down more and we'll have less... Less pumping, and what we do pump will be a more concentrated sludge, so... All right. Now... Trying to do this, aren't we?
Yeah. Now we have old or unfinished business.
Right, so... I see, is this speed concerns of West Pol- I haven't, I talked to Dave a little bit, he has made a presence there, but I haven't talked to him in a couple of weeks. So I really, I need to see if he's, if there's been any... If he's noticed anything, or maybe it's helped, just his presence has helped to calm the issue down a little bit. And town buildings, winter safety, has anybody had any thoughts? Now we've tried a couple of options, and we don't seem to either have the funding available or whatever, but has anybody given any thoughts about the library? I guess not, okay. But we need to keep that on our list to... See what, see what could be done, maybe there's a... Somewhere a me in the middle type of solution that we can come up with. But I, I'm not sure right now. But if nothing more, we'll have to make sure that if snow comes down on that roof, we'll have to block off the areas where it could, where it could fall and damage vehicles or persons. Anybody have any comments on that? Okay. Is there any other old business, Kristen, that you can have on your list?
See, this is Kristen, the only other bit of, oh, one thing that I would like to make a request on the board about is... Do, does the board have, give me permission to work with Elizabeth Gibson to formally advertise the energy coordinator position? There is a universal description for that position from the Secretary of State's office, and so I just wanted to check with you all to make sure you were okay with that going on to the website.
Looks like a nod, right Ed?
Yep. It was.
Ed made a motion and John seconded it. I'm sorry to watch the facial moves here, we're gonna roll through this. Any more discussion about advertising the webs, the energy coordinator? All right, everyone, Chuck? You go with that, Chuck, Chuck, you still awake?
Uh, I'm here, yeah, go ahead.
John?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
All right, so Kristen's gonna work with Elizabeth and put the energy coordinator position on the website. Thank you very much for...
And, and I will, and I will re-forward, you've all been forwarded the one application that we have received so far, and I will continue to keep you all in the loop. Thank you for your grand approval.
Perfect, all right, thank you. Is there anything else, Chris, anybody else has anything to offer under old business?
This is Chuck. I'll speak in regards to one fifty-three, our... Tax collected property, do we now own it by paper?
Yes, the deed is, the deed has been filed and the process has commenced. So, that's all, that was the latest that I got at the end of last week. I reached out to see if the deed had been filed, and she said it had been, and she has started the process.
So the process is?
To evict the tenants that are in there now. And then we gotta determine what we're gonna do with it. And I drove by the other day, and I think we need to clean it up before we do anything with it. I think it makes the most sense. I think we probably, I think that, my feeling is that that trailer looks like it's not in very good shape and it needs to go. And I would rather try and sell that lot as a, as a building lot than sell it with a rundown trailer on it. I think it would be better in the long run for the town, because we'd be able to make more revenue on a valuable piece of property there than than a rundown trailer, because our tax burden would be much better.
I didn't notice. Okay, Mike, uh... Does it still have the A-frame on the front of it?
I, I don't know, but that's not really a big deal, there's plenty of ways to get rid of that. But I think that that, that property is in very poor shape, and I, I... I think that the town should clean it up, the money we spend to clean it up will be recouped in the property, but once, once it's a cleaned up, suitable building lot, I think it will be easily sold because of the potential. I think it'll be very reasonable, you'll have sewer already at your disposal, and it has a well, I believe, so... You know, I think it would, it would make a good lot to start from scratch. And I think that if somebody came in, started from scratch, it would, it would end up being a more valuable piece of property, which would increase the tax, so that's, that's my feeling on it. As, as we progress and move in, then we'll have to take the next step as soon as we can get those people out. Anybody else have any input on that?
John agrees with you, Mike.
Okay, thank you.
And this Ed, I agree with you guys.
Good, so that's, sounds like, you know, I...
This is Frank with a question.
Yes, Frank. Go ahead, Frank.
Uh, has, has, of course, I'm talking from an insurance hat here. Has the property been, uh, Legan City Towns been notified of the ownership of the property, so they're covered under the policy?
Yes.
Because right now you have a landlord exposed.
Yes.
And I'm also wondering about the old, the old store. Is the old store premises also been scheduled under the policy?
Yes, I believe so. That's been ours for a couple of years now. Okay. Anybody have anything to offer under new business? Nothing under new business, huh? That's nice, all right. I guess we're up to public? Do we, we go to public comment, then executive session, right, okay?
Yes.
This is Frank.
Frank, you have something under public comment?
This is Frank.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just something quick. Is, Kristen may have gotten a copy of an email with the Secretary of State's General Counsel Office in regards to public records. And digital public records, and how they're to be made available and in association with open meetings. And it's, she got into some stuff, which is very detailed, Jenny, her sir. And it's, if you get a copy of that, just a one click glance through will give you the whole enchilada quickly, relative to that string. And, uh, and it's self-evident, I don't have to go through it anymore than that if you read it, okay?
Frank, this is, this is Kristen, and I just, Frank, I did get that email, and I did forward it along to the select board members as well, so they could review it, thank you.
Okay, anybody else have?
John, John Noor has his hand raised.
Okay. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I, I, I just have a question about the permitting process in Polit. I applied for a permit, got approved. It turns out the, I totally understand, the permit application was sent out to a budding neighbors. And I was just curious if it's possible, maybe for future mailings like this, to just send the necessary information that a budding neighbors might need, rather than the entire application, which has my, you know, my address, phone number, email address, my signature. You know, maybe if folks just need my phone number and address, you know, maybe that's enough. But I, this, this application was actually sent to, among the others, at least one family that does not abut my property. And they reached out to me to figure out why they were sent this. They received it as a forwarded address to their New Jersey residence. You know, I did have a nice conversation with them, but we were both confused why they were sent this entire application. So that's...
That, that would be, that would be something that we have to address with the zoning administrator, but I can understand for privacy purposes, some of that information wasn't necessarily needed to be shared with, with anyone else. Other than the review of the project, in my opinion, but actually, if you could, if you could address, ask those questions to the zoning administrator, he may either have a better explanation for us, or he may put it on his... On his task list to try and not do again, you know, come up with a better system so that information that's not necessarily, not necessary to share with others is not.
Yeah.
I do agree with that.
I did find that Jonas was very helpful, you know, in this whole process. I'm not trying to slant him in any way, but just, just the, you know, notification of budding neighbors. I do think that an abbreviated, necessary information only should be shared, so.
Now, and, and he may not even have considered that, you know, when, with the... The privacy standards have changed dramatically over the few years, you know, the last few years and such, and it's a very good point, and maybe if you bring it to his attention, he'll, he'll redo some of this, how that works, and at least review it. Thank you. Who else, is anybody else for the, want to add public comment tonight?
Fred's still here, but he still doesn't have volume on, so I don't know what's going on. Maybe he just joined us to see what we're doing now.
Right.
I think actually, this is Kristen, I think that was a different observer this evening. I think Fred left a little while ago.
All right. John, Sabaka, do you have anything to add, or are you just...
I'm just, uh, just listening to everyone else.
Okay, thank you for joining us. All right, if no one else has anything to add, let's go into, uh... Somebody want to make a motion, we go into executive session and talk to, about the web coordinator position? The web, I guess, yeah, coordinator, right?
It would be, yeah, to be, to discuss labor relations agreements, specifically employee wage information and employment information.
This is John. I'll make that motion, sorry Kristen.
No, you're fine.
Thank you. Somebody second that?
This is Ed, I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor of going in, Kristen?
Sorry, just a quick moment to add for discussion. For our executive session this evening, I will add everybody who is not a member of the select board back to the waiting room, and the select board will meet in their executive session under the accountability that they are the only ones in their rooms discussing this topic. And then once executive session is over, they will make a motion to exit. I will welcome everybody who would like to still remain in the waiting room back into the meeting, where the board will exit executive session and discuss any findings, if there are any.
Excellent, so all in favor of moving to the executive session, Chuck?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and move non-select board members into the waiting room now.
Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
To exit executive session with no decisions made.
Okay, we have... A second, Ed? Sure. Yeah.
Yes, I'll make that, I'll second that.
A second, all right. All in favor, Chuck?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, so, so we discussed potential candidates for the, for the web coordinator position and rates of pay. And what do you guys want to do?
This is Chuck. I would, um, make the motion that we would accept the second applicant that we spoke about.
Okay. Anybody want to second that motion?
John will second that.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor that we make him an offer, make the second candidate an offer? Chuck?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor. Kristen, can you arrange that? Okay. Thank you very much. So that's what we had on board for the meeting. And we've already gone, we're done then, aren't we?
Yep.
There just needs to be a motion to adjourn.
Awesome.
Make a motion to adjourn, this is Chuck.
Okay, Chuck, who wants to second that motion? Somebody does, John does, perfect.
John will.
Excellent. All in favor, Chuck?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ed? Yes. Bob?
Yes.
Thank you all for coming, and have a great evening.
Thank you.